We're gonna officially call this meeting to order. This is our regular council meeting for August the 29th, 2023. Clerk have recorded the official time. We'll all rise for the pledge of leashes, please.
I pledge leashes to the flag, to the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
But all right, now we just wanna pause and thank you for allowing us to come to the village here to do what is important for the residents and the businesses here in the village of Woodlawn. We ask, Lord, that you purge our hearts, our minds, again, that we make the right decisions. We ask in these blessings and that's in Jesus' name before he's sake, amen. Roll call, please.
Esther Boyd Pierce. Rosemary Brown, present. Cindy Chandler, present. Pamela Fitzgerald, present. Robert Lawson, present. Erin Tillman III, present. Airpool.
Present. Very well. The reading and disposal of the regular council meeting July 25th, 2023. Are there any corrections, leashes, or additions to those minutes in front of us for approval tonight?
Mayor, I have none.
All right, I just need a motion to approve the meetings of the regular council meeting minutes from July the 25th, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the previous council meeting from July 25th, 2023.
I second.
Motion been moved and properly second, all ayes.
Aye.
Well, I need a motion for approval of the special council meeting July the 27th, 2023, with any corrections of leashes to those minutes in front of us tonight.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from the special session of council, I mean, meeting on July 27th, 2023.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly second, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to approve the special council meeting from August 7th, 2023.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the meeting, special council meeting minutes from August 7th, 2023.
I'll second.
The motion has been moved and properly second for the approval of those minutes, all ayes.
Aye.
Very well. Clerk, do we have any appointments, confirmation, presentations tonight?
Yes, we have some pre-classes tonight.
All right. Come on up, commissioners, so good to see you.
Commissioner.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, and staff. Hello. Thank you for allowing me to come and say hello and give you an update from the county.
You're welcome.
So I passed out our menu of opportunity. This has been updated since last time I was here. I was here in 2017. I don't know who among you, some of you were here, but that was a long time ago. And I went to visit 49 jurisdictions, I thought in 49 days. It didn't work out for me. It was more like 49 weeks, because it took a long time to get around everybody. But I thought, you know, it's a good time to get back out. We're partnering in different ways right now at the county. And so you guys have been taking advantage of some of those opportunities. So I wanted to thank you for the partnership, but also remind some of the opportunities that are available. So the menu of opportunity gives you a pretty good idea of that. Happy to answer any questions about it. And then the contact information for all three county commissioners is on the back in case you'd like to get ahold of us. I'm gonna go through just a couple of things, and then I'm happy to answer questions if you have any. I'm gonna start with the regional safety complex, otherwise known as the gun range. So I've got good news and good news. The good news is that the work has started on the site in Colrain Township. We are in design. We will then be moving dirt, and then we will then be building out that complex. Remember, that is going to house not only the sheriff's range, which is there currently, it'll be an expansion of that. It will also house the CPD gun range, and it will be an expansion of that. And then we have many other partners that come in from law enforcement and use that range for training. And so it is going to be a, it's gonna be a nice new facility. It's an outdoor range. There aren't, it's nothing like the range here, where it's very close to residential properties. It's nothing like that where it's situated in Colrain Township. There's also a build-out of the building there so that CPD, Sheriff's Office, and other entities can come together and collaborate when it comes to law enforcement. So I'm very excited to deliver the news. I know it's been about 70 years, so I know it's time. The other good news is that we, as you probably know, we have been working on a financial stack to make this happen, and it's tens of millions of dollars to make this project work. And we have been working very hard to try to get that stack together. I am glad to report that the federal government has come in, the state government has come in, and the amounts are around $4 million at the federal level, it's around $3 million at the state level. The city of Cincinnati is in at about 4.25. The county is picking up the rest, it's about $15 million and may go higher than that. We do have a small gap because one of the grants did not come in from the federal government. We will be filling the difference. The city and the county are in discussions right now. It has not delayed any of the work. The work continues, is moving forward. We will fill that gap probably within a month's time, but the good news is it's happening.
Good stuff.
It will take a minute.
Good stuff.
I mean, it's gonna, I don't know what the timeframe is, but it's a good year to get that organized up in Colrain Township and move them, because it has to be ready to go before they're moving off the site out here. But anyway, thank you for the partnership, Woodlawn, Lincoln Heights, Even Delve, all been at the table with Colrain Township, with the city and the county and Sherrod Brown's office to make this happen. It's been a fantastic partnership, and I appreciate your work on this.
Yes, it has.
Mayor Poole, it's really been important.
Thank you.
The other updates I have related to the county are that we're in good shape at the county. We have stabilized our workforce, and we are able to provide some of the partnership opportunities I'm gonna talk about because we're in a pretty good fiscal spot. We've got a solid reserve, we are paying people competitive wages, we've got a parental leave policy, we have tuition reimbursement. So we are an employer of choice at Hamilton County, and I'm very proud to say that. And we're trying to recruit and retain especially young people into the workforce. Because as with everyone, it's hard to get folks to come in and wanna work in service for the government. So anyways, we're doing a pretty good job. We do have some challenges, particularly with sheriff's deputies, with 911, and with children's services. So you can hear how important those services are. So if you know of anybody that would like to serve at the county, please, please have them reach out. We would love to have them. We have kind of almost finished out with the ARPA dollars, the American Rescue Plan dollars. Thank you to the federal government for giving us the opportunity to utilize those dollars to the benefit of the communities. As you know, we did some very large investments, about $40 million towards affordable housing and different kinds of housing for people with disabilities and seniors and people that are reentering to society. So we're well underway with that. The first tranche has gone out. We've also pushed a lot of money into mental health, particularly with youth. You all know the challenges, especially post-COVID, with young kids and mental health issues. And so we are working in partnership with organizations and schools to try to make sure those kids remain safe in the schools. And then we've done a lot of workforce development with those dollars. In addition to that, we're doing a lot on the sustainability front. Your logo is all about sustainability and being green. So at the county, we're looking into turning our fleet into EVs. That is also gonna take a while, because we don't have the infrastructure right now to accommodate that. We don't have the charging stations, nor do we have the mechanics that can work on the vehicles. But we are right now working on the charging stations. We're using some grants, again, from the federal government in partnership, to put those in some of our facilities. And every garage we're building, and we did one in the West End near FC, we've got another one coming online at Finley Market, all of those have charging facilities in them for folks that are using EVs. We've also, you know, got solar panels on some of our buildings. We're putting in bike trails at a volume that we've never done. We haven't really been in that space much, but we're trying to partner with communities. The one we're looking at right now is right up along the Mill Creek. I don't know if you're familiar, we've got a couple pocket parks along the Mill Creek, especially down in, think about the Fairmont community, Millvale, Camp Washington. Those are the communities that would be impacted by what I'm talking about. We need investment there, and we're, again, in partnership. It's all about partnerships. We're trying to get some of those bike trails connected. So pretty exciting, in communities that have not typically seen investment from anybody. And so we're investing in these communities and providing not only recreation and an opportunity to have a scenic trail in their neighborhood, but also connect to jobs and to grocery stores and, you know, all the rest of it that's important for people that are on foot. And then lastly, I just wanted to talk about partnerships. So I have in front of me a list of the opportunities that Woodlawn has taken advantage of over the last three years. I shared it earlier. They, there, there's a wide variety. The total amount of money that the village has partnered with the county, it only works when you all apply for the money, I must say. We can have the money available all day long, but until you partner with us, it doesn't matter, right? And so over the last three years, Woodlawn has received over $500,000 from the county. I know, congratulations to you. So just in 2023 alone, we've got CDBG money for the fire hydrant replacement program. You took advantage of the residential recycling incentive program, that's through Resource. You got a small event grant for Juneteenth, that was $25,000. And the big grant is the community revitalization grant. Now, there's asterisks on my sheet, meaning that we have not yet approved this. My suspicion is we will. So I'm here to optimistically say that I think this is likely to pass, but that's $231,000. These grants were meant to revitalize community, neighborhood districts that you identify as ones that are ready to catalyze what's happening in your community. And so we rely on your expertise to partner with us as we invest and make the community all that it can be. And so thank you for the partnership, it wouldn't work without you. And so, again, I feel like I'm delivering good news to you.
Yes, you did, yes.
But it's, we really are grateful. And beyond that, you all host meetings for us here.
Yes.
We hosted the Commission on Women and Girls, which is rocking it, by the way, ladies. We just got a bill passed at the state of Ohio. It was a recommendation of the Commission on Women and Girls, and it was not, I don't know if you're familiar with the legislature right now, but it's not an easy group to penetrate. But we got a bill passed that requires all schools in the state of Ohio to provide no-cost-period products, grades six through 12.
Yes, that's great.
No easy task, and the state's paying for it.
Yes.
So they put $5 million in the budget for the dispensers and the products, and that is right now happening in all the schools in the state of Ohio.
Great, that is awesome.
So they're rocking it. I know, I know, it's so exciting. So anyways, that's my report. We are negotiating with the Bangles at this moment in time. Wanna let you know, so far, so good. The lease doesn't expire until 2026, but you know what? We're getting started early to try to get a lease that is better than the last. The last one wasn't all that great for taxpayers. But we have a different relationship with the Bangles now. There are different people in that organization and in our organization that are interested in collaboration. And so we are working in that spirit, and so we'll see how we do. It's gonna take a little while to finish that out as well, but we're underway, and, you know, they're doing well, we're doing well, so hopefully it'll all work out.
Good stuff.
So again, thank you for having me, I appreciate it, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for coming.
Real quickly out in the audience, Ms. Clemens, I see your hand up real quickly. Yes, please.
Well, the question is, and the good news is they're getting rid of, that was one of my questions about the firing range. Is there, are there gonna be any monies to help the communities when they take away the firing range? Are you just gonna leave the land just sitting there? And is there any tax monies or grants to help rebuild that area? You know, 70 years of a firing range says we, there's bullets, there's stuff in the ground, there's all kinds of things. Is there monies to help?
Yeah, so I'm gonna turn this way, so I don't have my back to you.
But you understand what I'm saying.
I do understand your question. So the city of Cincinnati, I don't know if you're familiar, the city of Cincinnati owns that property, and so it is not up to the county to decide what's going to happen there. But I can tell you, and I know they are in conversation, we have periodic meetings, and Woodlawn is at the table, about the disposition of that property once the firing range moves off. Obviously, we need to have remediation happen, there's pollution there, as you said, there's bullets, and so we need to take care of that. We are looking at maybe state grants to help us remediate the property. And when I say we, it's really a collective, but the city of Cincinnati owns it, and so I can't answer specifically what they're thinking about that, but we do have these meetings. Sherrod Brown's office is the one that organizes them, and all the communities are sitting together to say, how are we gonna move this thing forward, and what's gonna happen once we move the property? I will, I will be honest with you, my focus has been getting off the property. And in collaboration with Colrain Township.
Right.
That's been my space, so I can't answer you directly, other than to say they are working at it. The city of Cincinnati is in charge of that.
Everyone understands that my question is, because you can't just leave the land vacant.
Right, right.
I don't think there's any expectation of that.
Yes, yeah, you're welcome. Ms. Starr?
Yeah, hi, I'm Michelle Starr, resident of Woodlawn. Thank you for your advice. I appreciate it, and you're the partner in my need, for instance. So my question is, can you clarify the start and completion, expected, estimated time?
I can do my best. The start, it already has started. The work has started on the Colrain site. We are in design, started a couple of months ago. And so we will then, as I said, moving the dirt is the biggest piece. It, that, the place where we're putting this and expanding, there are spoils, is what they call them, in the engineer's office. I'm not exactly what's, no, I don't know what's there exactly, but it has to be moved. And so there's gonna take a lot of effort to make that happen. My guess would be that we'll finish out '23, it'll be well into '24, I think, before we finish that out. Could be a little bit longer, because we're building out the outside range and the building and the parking lot, and it's gonna take some time. But the work has started, and we're going as fast as we can.
Okay, my second question, you mentioned staffing for the county. Are you targeting, are you ensuring that you're targeting a diverse population that you're going to recruit?
Yes. So we have recently completed a disparity study at the county. The county's never done a disparity study before, and what that does is set a baseline for where we are and where we need to go. And so without that, it was hard for us to be very, very intentional about the diversity piece, not only with employment, but with contracting, with purchasing, think of all the things that the county does. And so, yes, we have a Director of Inclusion and Economic Development, Inclusion and Equity, Robert Bellis' name. We've expanded his office, like he has now, I think, got three or four people underneath him. But employment for the county, it's very, it's very important to all three county commissioners that we have a workforce that looks like the county itself.
Yes.
And it has not in the past. I will tell you candidly, when I got there in 2017, no, I mean, there weren't any women, I mean, there weren't any people of color, there just was not a lot of diversity. It was not, it was not on the mind, right? We have made it a priority, and so you, if you went down there now on the sixth floor, you would see it, you're gonna see it in every department. So, yes, we are trying to be as intentional as possible, and now we have the disparity study that allows us to be more.
I was there when they approved the bill to, um, patents.
Oh, Robert?
Yeah, that was, I'm saying, you know, Leash's team is diverse, so we have, sorry, the leash piece. My last question, I promise.
No worries.
You mentioned partnership with Woodlawn. Is there a limit to the grants that we apply for?
The only limit is how much we can afford to do.
Two, two.
I mean, and I was saying this earlier, the reason that it's important to look at the three years is because some of these grants have not been available for three years. I mean, the small event grant, this is the first year for that. The community development, this is the second year for that. So the capacity issue is with us. And so as we make these funds available, that allows Woodlawn and other communities to participate. So that's the capacity. And the other piece of capacity is that there are some communities, there are 49 jurisdictions in Hamilton County, some of them are very small and don't have the staffing or the infrastructure to even apply. And so we do have an impact grant to allow for those communities, there are about seven of them, to build capacity, to take advantage of what we're offering. But I hope that answers your question.
Very well, thank you.
I got a question, hey? Was some of these new grants available due to the ARPA phones?
No.
Okay.
No, the revitalization grant is coming, coming out of the general fund, as is the small event grant. There, we were, were able to do this because, you remember, just, it's been a number of years back, we were able to put .25 of the sales, a penny of a sales tax into the general fund. When I got that, we were starving, we did not have enough money to run the organization, we just didn't. We weren't paying people competitive wages, no parental leave, no, things I just told you about. So beyond stabilizing the workforce, creating a reserve that's healthy, we had money set aside for economic development. This is the economic, there are big projects too, Convention Center and others, but this was a really important priority for the, for the county. It was my initiative, actually, but, but it's in partnership with all three of us then and now, but that's why we're able to do it.
Good, good stuff, good stuff. You're welcome. Commissioner, it's always a pleasure to see your face in our house as we say that. We always joke between the two of us, talking about being in my house. Again, it's a pleasure for you to come in just to update us, the residents here, so they understand, and most importantly, the gun range. Yes, we have been working very, very hard over the last so many years about that. It's moving on track. We don't talk about it in our public meetings, probably like we should, but that's just a confirm that, that this shift is moving over there.
That's right.
So we're just excited that that's gonna be completed here soon. I'm just gonna leave it there, soon, because I want it done right.
As soon as we can, right?
As soon as we can. But again, thank you so much for coming out and seeing us.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Clerk? Ms. Clemens?
No.
Did you sign in tonight?
I did, I did.
No worries.
Well, Commissioner, answer the question that I had about the firing range.
Okay, good.
But I found a new question.
All right.
And, and, thank you very much. The, the other question that I had has to do with, we're gonna be voting pretty soon for mayor, councils, everything. And what I'm, what I would like to suggest, and you can drop it down if you are, is to have like a debate in my backyard, to have all of the mayor candidates or council candidates, because the, the community needs to hear you.
Gotcha.
They need to know what your visions are for this community, what changes are gonna be made, what, what, how do I say this, what new visions, or what, if you look at back what you did in the past, how would you change differently? So these are some of the questions. I mean, you can send out those answers.
Okay.
So that was one thing. The other thing is, when we talk about, I think that's where they're building houses, does the, does the village ever think about small homes, tiny homes? Is that, I know that's a zoning thing, but do we ever think about that as far as bringing, bringing revenue, I'm sorry, I don't take my mask off, revenue into the, to the village? Because I know you're working hard at building housing for seniors, you know, and everything, but what about tiny housing? Don't laugh at me, I watch TV.
I, I, there's no laugh, there's no laughs. I wanted to, I wanted to answer your questions as you presented them. One, the council itself does not put on a debate. I believe that that is in the works. I have been reached out about that, it's an organization that wants to do that. We normally allow that to happen when that cycle comes in the fall. That's the first thing. Your second question was relating to the small houses.
Yes.
And that's pretty much in the planning. We talk about what, what Woodlawn looks like in the future. Not to say that that has not been talked about in terms of what type of housing and all of that. We really haven't sat down at the table and really dug deep to say what we want in our property that we acquired not long ago. But we kind of have an idea of what will work for the village, right? What works best for the village. So those talks will continue to go, we'll continue to have those talks until we get where we're comfortable to move forward in the project that we're presenting that, that'll go on that property. That's kind of where we are with that.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
That's a good idea, though.
Very welcome. All right. Clerk?
Say.
Thank you, all right. Committee reports, committee of the whole, August 7th, 2023. Ms. Boyd?
It's me.
Yes, ma'am.
I am not as prepared as I should be, but I'll go through this the best I can. You have any questions for me afterwards? We, we went through a lot the other day, and so I'm gonna read it, but there's a lot more that you may have questions about, and please stop me after the meeting and do that. All right, committee of the whole is on August 7th, 2023, and in attendance was Mayor Poole, Rosemary Brown, Cindy Chandler, Pamela Fitzgerald, and Erin Tillman III. Okay, one of the things that, we had the village manager's update, Mr. Engel is serving as our interim village manager, and we talked about Juneteenth and the after, we had an after-action meeting that took place on July 27th. So, and, and we talked about what was good, what, what we needed to do better if we give this event again. So we saw, we saw some video of what our drone could see from above, and it was very interesting, and it really made you feel good that we were really secured with the security that we had. And we are talking about this moving forward for next year, and we'll be making a decision about that soon, entering into another contract with Mr. Edwards and Call and Play. Then we talked about Harmony Park, Harmony Park is coming along so well. The construction of Harmony Park is continuing, but at this point, and I don't know if we knew during the meeting, we were going to try to have a dedication to the Harmony Park on September 1st, but it's now been moved to September 8th?
Correct, yes.
It's September 8th at?
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock PM. We'd like all of you to come. We are so happy about Harmony Park, because it, it took a while, but we did get this done. And for me, I'm gonna make a statement, the other night at the music festival, I was gonna do it in new business, I made a statement that no taxpayer funds were used for Harmony Park. I misstated that, and I wanna correct that. Harmony Park cost about a total of $170,000. All the construction was grant-funded, and we put out about $12,000, which is 6.3% of that whole project. And we bought things like trash containers, benches, and things like that that the, that the village will keep. But the construction, we didn't pay anything, that was totally funded by grants, but we did put money in there, and I wanted to correct my misstatement the other night. Okay, but it's gonna be a beautiful place. I also, when we, when I first got on council, we heard about the Harmony Park, and we, and I did a lot of research on it, and at the time, that was in 2020, 2021, there weren't but about five, excuse me, about nine in the country that they talked about. I think it started out of Colorado, but we have one in downtown Cincinnati, which was a nice Harmony Park, but this one is even larger, and it's something that we can really be proud of, and I think that we'll really enjoy using. So, the reception on September. Okay. Lee Crest, Redna Terrace, and Chester, all the project grants agreements have been signed, so we'll be moving forward or finishing up what has already been started. The village, right now, we have an HR person, but we are going, we are looking into getting a potential HR company, and so we sent out some HR surveys, we got some responses back to the employees, and we're in the process of setting that up. Lawn and leaf pickup by Rumpke, the village manager has asked Rumpke to get a quote to provide the residents with yard waste containers, okay? And it would be an extra $12,000 more a year for the village, but the village manager is in talks with them now, so that should, we should have a report on that, maybe by the next meeting. The Southern Gateway Project, the project's next phase will be the email open house facilitate, uh, excuse me, entail an open house facilitated by KZF. They will also attend some of the summer concert series, they may have attended already, but they will be attending some of the summer concert series for the community engagement. And we will schedule an open And we will schedule an open house in August. Now, I'm not sure when that.
So we pushed that to September because of the air conditioning work at the rack.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'll update that.
So it'll be September. All right. So as a reminder, this planning project is being funded, $40,000 in grants from Hamilton County. Thank you for that, Mr. Treehouse. Timberland and Timberview, Mount Pleasant Topping has completed, there was a, the punch list provided to them. So there were some defects, I guess, but Mount Pleasant Topping, we're saying that they have completed this list. Okay, if something is not done or anything, you can contact the village manager. The baseball fields, the village is reviewing a proposal from Team All Sports to deal with the field's drainage issue. The proposal received from Team All Sports was $20,000. So the village will consider this as part of its capital project budget for next year. Ronnie Road and Woodstock timeline, the construction has begun on Ronnie Road in Woodstock. The project manager is Tim Nieman and Joey Hood of the consultants. I think they are engaging with the residents more. I think Ms. Chandler was dealing with, with talking to them, and they are engaging with the residents.
So I've been working with our interim village manager, Tim Engel, and his admin assistant, Monica Yihad. And they've been great working with CT consultants and engaging and providing updates to the residents.
Good, that's good, good.
So I'm not sure of the completion or when they think it will be completed.
End of November is their timeline.
All right, now Recreation Department Program Analysis, we have, you are receiving the analysis in the mail. It's vitally important to get that back if we can. The reason is, we are doing this because we needed some scientific data. We tried to analyze and do things for years with the recreation. But a recreation analysis is something that I read about, is usually done about every five years. And so we, I don't think we've had one. They're very costly, but it'll give us some scientific data to deal with. And hopefully, it will, the recreation, we've been losing money with our recreation center, and most residents know that. So this is what we're trying to stop. We have some good programming going on, but we have to figure out how we can stop the bleed. And that's what this recreational analysis is for. So we need you to get it back in because we have to have so many, we have to have so many surveys back in so that we can consider it as scientific information. Otherwise, if not, we wouldn't have enough to call it a scientific data result. So please, if you got them, please send them back in. You can also do them online. I got one, and I was preparing to send it back in. It's, you get an envelope, it's addressed, it has posted. But after I did it, I got online and did it, and you know, and sent it in because I didn't want to forget. Oh, I'm sorry. I have someone that said that too.
Yeah, so we have gotten some concerns that people haven't gotten the mail to their homes yet.
Okay.
I know they were all sent out on the 10th of August, so it might just be a little bit of delay in the mail. But we do have them on our website. You can fill them out there, and you can take it right off the website.
Right, I was.
It looks like a bill.
Yeah.
Yeah, people are probably not looking at it.
I was going to say, getting on the website was.
Right, but it is on the website.
And it does work because I have done it.
Okay, okay, okay. Yes, Ms. Ty?
If it is on the website, I got the all call just before this that asked you to fill it out.
Right.
And send it back in.
Uh huh.
But is there any way to do an all call that basically says, here is the site, the website of the survey, if you've not received a hard copy of it?
Yeah.
Good idea.
We could do that.
This is a good idea.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
So, right, so we can get to see, and if you see your neighbors or friends or anybody, please engage with them to ask them if they sent it in, and that it would help us very much, the village very much if they can get that in. Thank you, thank you, Stacy. All right, we received a backhoe. We purchased a backhoe from the city of Wyoming, and we're now in possession of that backhoe. Hamilton County Revitalization Grant, Revitalization Grant. We got for $231,200. And we are, and that was to purchase property on Springfield Pike. And everything is moving along in a positive manner. So thank you again. We, the fire department has, has received another grant. They do very well with that. They have a FEMA Assistance to Firefighters Grant. And I don't have the amount here, but the fire department has successfully secured these grants for the past several years. Definitely helps. Oh, here it is over here, $71,544. And the village matched this amount with 5%, $3,577,000. So it's working with getting emergency medical equipment and services. So we're doing very well with that. Springfield Pike Greenwicher improvements, the village has awarded $1,221,600 from Sorder for the improvements of the Greenwich Way as well as Springfield Pike, which will include sidewalks. Salt Barn, we have filled up our salt barn for the snow already and preparing for the snow. Okay, we're talking about getting flock cameras for the police department. And these are cameras that hook up statewide, nationwide, I think, that hook up statewide or nationwide. And for something that could happen in, they had something that happened in Cleveland, they had cameras all the way down. They explained it to us, and they caught the perpetrators in Atlanta. So the village is trying to come up with some kind of way that we would get a total cost for eight cameras will be $29,200 for the first year and $24,000 for each additional year thereafter. So we're looking into that.
Good.
Okay. Chief, the fire chief, Chief Boots, Chief Johnson. He read the monthly reports, and we went over some things that the fire department is always doing with the community. And he had to leave on an emergency call. So. But the police chief, Chief Williams, reported the following. They have 100 days of a safety campaign was touched down on OBIs and DUI, speeding, seat belts, and other traffic violations. He spoke about the flock cameras again and the benefit that they would be for the village. The police department is participating in a speed awareness campaign. And they're participating in a Winton Woods National Night Out, or they participated in it August 10 at 5:00 PM. We secured two new officers on board, and they're doing a wonderful job. We, excuse me, with us, you wouldn't believe, I'm a teacher. And we have officers to be at Woodland Elementary and Idea School to keep on the radar for. And Ms. Fitzgerald asked about a full-time code enforcer. Mr. Engel stated that we have the job description and I, and that we will be seeking a full-time code enforcer. We may, Mr. Engel said that we may look for a retired police officer or a job to deputize. Because sometimes the police has to go out with our code enforcer when he has to go out on calls. And Parks and Recreation, both camps, Vacation Kids and Coomba operated smoothly together. And they did a wonderful job down there with the children. The summer feeding program ended August 11. Currently offering 25 meals a day, or well, currently then, but they were averaging 25 meals a day. Let me see, the pool, July, oh, the attendance of the pool was up, and we did very well with the pool. The concert series season is going right now. In fact, we have a concert tomorrow night, Thursday night, summer concert here. Let's see. All right, and Public Works repaired stop signs on Linden and Wayne. Picked up moor from shop and new lawn, picked up moors that were being repaired, and new lawn moors. Picked up the backhoe from Wyoming I mentioned above. And they do, they cut and trim constantly. They're out there constantly, and you see it. Okay, new business we had now, and then we adjourned. And if you have questions for me, there's a lot more.
Esther, did you say something about the brush pickup?
Yes, okay.
I love your comment on that.
Okay, let's see what it was. Lawn and leaf pickup from Rumkey. I would mean.
So there was, so the question was, or at least it was thought of, that perhaps we could do yard waste containers for the residents. That way, if anything fit in a container, they would pick it up. The cost of containers from Rumkey is about $12,000 a year for the village. We've kind of continued to talk with Rumkey on that. They have advised that it might be more beneficial to provide the residents with the brown, you know, roll-offs. And the residents can repurpose their current trash containers as yard waste containers. So that's kind of what we're kind of discussing with Rumkey and trying to get a feel for what we would like to do.
So a decision hasn't been made yet?
No, we have not made a decision yet.
When you do, will you put this in the newsletter, or will you let people know?
Sure will.
They don't have a standard?
Absolutely.
All right.
Very well. Any other questions for Ms. Boyd? Yes, Commissioner?
I was going to say that there might be an opportunity or resource to make for those containers. Don't know if there is, but I sit on that committee, so you might want to call resource just across that to you and see if there's money available.
We will do that. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's good to have a Commissioner in the house. Ms. Clemens, did you have a question, please?
I needed to understand, I thought you said that all of the work that was done on Timberview, Timberland, whatever, is done, we're finished with it?
Yeah.
I was talking about the, remember the tree removal?
Yes.
And all of the things that are still going out where the roots were supposed to be done?
Okay.
We've still got issues with that particular job.
Right.
I don't know if anybody's going to, I know it's an end to Charlie's.
Yeah, so Mr. Engel has followed up, and Mr. Tillman had came in a meeting. Mr. Tillman and Ms. Fitzgerald, of course, lives in your subdivision, and they shared that with this group. So we are really aware that there is a small issue over there that Mr. Engel is dealing with. So it's not.
Mr. Engel, I'm sorry.
That is Mr. Engel, our interim manager. Yes, that is correct.
Thank you.
But that he is looking at that to correct it.
I heard that it was fine. That's why I wanted to readdress it, bring it up.
So I think perhaps what you heard tonight was that they were talking about the punch list. Punch list is anything that has to be taken, has to be done prior to us signing totally off, giving you your last payment. That has been signed off. So those were two different vendors, just to be clear. There was a vendor for the streets, and there was a vendor for the trees.
Right.
Okay, so those two different, those are two separate vendors that he's dealing with to make it right.
But the trees haven't been paid.
Well, I believe that there's some, where he can call, he can feedback. Yes.
So those trees are on our agenda. So the original contract, the tree company was the removal of the trees. The roots would have to have been removed later. That's part of our tree board, and she is taking care of that at the moment. So we'll get back in contact with the vendor to do the rest of the agreement.
You're welcome.
And I also brought to the attention, brought to the attention of Tim that they need to look at the blacktop again too. So he has it on his list to try to look at that too. So even though there's two vendors, there's still two outstanding issues or questions in regards to that too. So he's opening that back up.
I understand you say the whole.
Okay, no worries.
All right.
Any other questions for Ms. Boyd and Committee of the whole? Having done, Ms. Fitzgerald, Finance Committee?
Yes. So the Finance Committee meeting was August 21 at 7:00 PM. And the members present was myself, Esther Boyd, and Cindy Chandler, also Mr. Engel, Mr. Willis, our tax person, Mr. Poole as well, I'm sorry, Mayor Poole, as well as Rosemary Brown. I'll give you a quick income tax update, and then I'm going to turn this over to the finance manager to give you all the other numbers. The village collected $606,178.78 for the month of July. Since its inception of the road tax fund, we have collected $3,887,934. We've dispersed $1,179,354.91. And the fund balance as of today is $2,708.579. And then I'm going to turn this over to the finance manager to give his finance update in regards to all the other numbers.
Very well, thank you. All right, Mr. Engel, your report, interim manager's report?
Really, I went ahead and provided counsel with the memo for my report. Juneteenth, again, Ms. Boyd had talked about that as part of the Committee of the whole review. Mr. Edwards was looking for a response by the very 1st of August, determining what the village's direction is. Like to ask council if they have an idea of the direction we'd like to take, if we can determine that this evening, or if we want to determine if we need to have a special meeting, that would be appreciated. Harmony Park, finishing touches for Harmony Park should be taken care of tomorrow, actually, by Ford Development. As noted, we'll have a ribbon cutting ceremony on the 8th of August, start at about 6 o'clock.
September.
I'm sorry, where'd I say? I say August. September 8, we'll start at about 6 o'clock, but the ribbon cutting ceremony takes place at about 7. There will be a food truck on site for anybody that would like to buy dinner. Lee Crest Road, Redna Terrace, again, everything has been signed. We'll probably put that project out early next year when that is the suggested strategy of our engineers. As noted, the HR audit has been completed. We'll be looking for Paula Alexander from Management Partners to speak to us at the Committee of the whole meeting on September 12. We'd like her to kind of speak to us about that audit. We've gone over the lawn and leaf pickup. The Southern Gateway Project, again, there'll be an open house for the Southern Gateway Project on September the 14th from 6 to 8 at the Recreation Center. So please do, feel free to come down, kind of look at everything that's been discussed. They'll have some mockups and things of that nature. We'd love to get your comment on that. And again, that was provided, the funding for that was provided to us from Hamilton County. The baseball field renovations, we're looking at that as a capital item for next year. Ronnie Road in Woodstock, some good news with that, actually. So obviously, the work has started. The Greater Cincinnati Water Works has agreed to replace the water mains on Mayview Force Drive between Ronnie and Woodstock. The Greater Cincinnati Water Works has committed $25,000 to the village to repay the area that will be disrupted due to that work. We're working with Nieman Brothers to determine how much the additional cost would be to perform reconstruction of certain parts of that area. That'll improve the overall life of the road as well as drivability. We do not believe the additional cost will be terribly substantial. Also, they will be replacing some of the, I think, of the aprons for the driveways on Ronnie and Woodstock. And that's to go ahead and improve the culvert that runs under those roads. We've discussed that with Nieman Brothers. They will replace those with concrete. That will again improve the life of it, and it will preserve the infrastructure of the new piping that they put in. So great news for the residents there, also great news for the waters. Recreations Department Program Analysis is continuing. Please do fill those surveys out. We are still moving in the correct direction with the revitalization grant. That's actually on our agenda tonight to approve the contract. Quick update from the police department. Chief Williams and Sergeant Kelly have one more class until they achieve the FBI trilogy. And once completed, we will be an FBI trilogy award agency, which means that all of our command staff will have completed all parts of that training. So that's a big deal for the police department.
Yes. Yes.
Lee Press Road and Redna Terrace will be bid out next year along with, with Lee Press, or I'm sorry, wrong, along with, was it Gruniger and Pike? The HR audit, I'm, I'm rereading what I wrote, I'm sorry. Springfield Pike and Gruniger improvements will be bid out next year along with Lee Press. Uh, salt barn construction has started, so they are working on the concrete work now. That is supposed to end middle of September, so just in time to put some salt, our new salt barn. And again, the flock cameras, Ms. Boyd had mentioned that in her review. We are looking for a date for the flock company to come down and speak to council, give them a little bit of demonstration and information about the system as well. They would like council to be informed on that and they all want to come down and meet everybody as well, so working on a date for that. Um, otherwise, I do not have anything else in the manager's report.
Real quickly, real, real quickly, I want to make sure, I seen her hand, I seen your hand, but Ms. Fitzgerald's hand went up, I just want to make sure that we.
I just got one quick question, who pays for those aprons on Ronnie Road?
So that actually comes out of the road tax for the village because the aprons must be torn out to improve the culvert, we will go ahead and fix those.
Correct, correct. Ms. McWilliams?
Tim, the bricks in Harmony Park, the bricks of the residency names and family names, will they be included when the dedication takes place?
They're already in.
They're already there.
Already in.
Yes, they're already there, very well. All right, um, any questions for Mr. Engel?
I got this one. On the project, I was interested, rose my eyebrows, interested on the Springfield Pike Greeninger improvements.
Yes.
Can we look at getting some additional benches and maybe trash cans since people will be walking through there, maybe we can get some funding?
Yeah, I'm happy to look at that. Um, I know we've been trying to get some additional trash cans in the village as well. We really like the trash cans that we purchased for Harmony Park. So I know we've kind of discussed, kind of slowly replacing the old ones with those as well.
Right.
So as we do the, the improvements to the sidewalks, we'll try to add some of those.
Cause they look nice, but we want people to be able to place the trash.
Yeah, that's stuff, okay, very well. Mr. Engel mentioned tonight, his first part, he talked about the Juneteenth celebration. We had talked about that in our meeting earlier in our Committee of the Whole. We agreed that we would give some feedback to call a play by the thirty-first, being tonight is the twenty-ninth. I need just to know what council's pleasure is for us moving forward for twenty-four, for the Juneteenth celebration.
Mayor?
Yes.
Mr. Engel contacted me earlier and I shared with him that I would like a little more discussion in regard to a certain item, specifically talking about the parking. So I don't know what that looks like as far as a special council meeting, or I would like more conversation about the parking piece of the MOU.
All right, so I am fine to have a meeting, a special meeting, however, we, this was thrown at us thirty days ago and we, we, when we have these questions, if we would just bring these questions forward, we're having a meeting to have a meeting. We had, again, we're, we're having a special council meeting to decide where we're going and this council was the one who said by the thirty-first.
Well, Mayor, with, with all due respect, you are absolutely correct and I didn't mean to cut you off. It was thrown at us by the entity that their wish was to have it by the thirty-first and, um.
We would do that, though, right?
Their wish was to have it and answer by the thirty-first and quite honestly, there wasn't an opportunity for council as a whole to discuss it. And Mr. Engel, with his due diligence, reached out to, I believe, all of council today and I mentioned to him, it was kind of off of the radar with more pressing things taking place. And I shared with him where I felt what my concern was and, and again, like I just said here, I don't know if that looks like a special council meeting or a conversation, but I do have questions or concerns about the parking piece.
Very well.
I as well.
Very well. Tim, we'll follow up with that the more I'll have a conversation with you.
Sounds good.
Finance Directors' Report.
So I will. Ms. Fitzgerald read the, I read the tax from, from last month. So Finance Committee took place on August twenty-first. Reports provided to council were appropriations and revenues reports as of July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three. The village collected sixty-one percent of budgeted revenues and expended forty-one percent of appropriations. Receipts and expenses reports were also provided. As of July thirty-one, twenty-twenty-three, the village collected eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand six hundred and twenty-five dollars and eighty cents and dispersed two million thirty-six thousand seven hundred and forty-seven dollars and sixty cents. Additional expenditures in July included the purchase of the new ladder truck as well as the purchase of the backhoe from the city of Wyoming. General Fund reports were reviewed, the village, I'm sorry, the village has dispersed sixty-two percent of general fund budgeted expenditures and collected eighty-one percent of total general fund budgeted receipts. Fund balance reports, as well as the bank rec overtime and salary expense reports, were also reviewed as part of the meeting along with Recreation's reports.
All right, any questions for Mr. Engel? Ms. Fitzgerald, we do need an approval of those bank reconciliation. So I need a motion to approve those.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the bank reconciliation, the receipt listing and the payment listing.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all eyes?
Aye.
Very well, all right, Law Director's Report.
Yes, the only item we have is a application for a liquor license for one zero zero seven five Springfield Pike. We have begun the review and doing our due diligence on our end, that has not been completed yet. So we would like to recommend to council, that council request a thirty-day extension from the Division of Liquor Control in order to provide a recommendation to council. So that would just take a motion.
Is there a motion to, for such?
Request an extension.
For to request an extension for the liquor.
I'll make a motion to request an extension for the liquor.
Control?
Control.
Okay, and that's for the address at ten zero one zero zero seven five Springfield Pike?
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, all eyes? Very well.
That's all I have.
All hands, all right. Couple, uh, couple announcements again, just want to follow up. Harmony Park, the, the Harmony Park grand opening is, again, set for September the eighth at six o'clock. We're asking that all of our residents and friends come out in the joy of the ribbon cutting directly across the street here on the corner here. Really excited about that direct survey analysis and we've been talking about that on and off. Um, I know the last couple of weeks at the summer concert series, we've made announcements about such. Um, and I believe that the, um, it has.
Sorry, I couldn't hear, did you say something about concert series?
Yes, our concert series, I talked about the concert series with the rec analysis survey. And we've been talking about that at those concert series publicly, just to let people know that the represent, representatives were at the gazebo taking some information, some feedback from our residents. They are not scheduled to be at our concert on Thursday, is that correct or yes?
I don't believe they're, they're not.
I think it was two weeks and then they're gonna, with the open house, that we're gonna announce that.
September the eighth or around that.
The, the open house.
The open house is September fourteenth.
Yes, yes, okay, so that's what that was, yes.
I have another thought that just came up. For the rec analysis survey, you could also send it home through district flyers at the school, so all the school parents would get it.
So, real, real quickly, Ms. Ty, anything that comes from the village has to be, we can't just arbitrarily give it to the school, it has to be approved. Princeton has a protocol that we must follow. So any information that goes through the school has to be approved by the building principal. Um, and then the building principal has to get approval from his or her immediate supervisor. So a lot of times, yes, we think about that, using that as an avenue, but we have to be very careful of the rules and, and their procedures within the village, I mean, within the school district. Okay? Yes, yes, we have to get a, an approval. But a good avenue for it, though, right?
Great idea.
Good idea, though, yeah. We talked about the survey, KZF Design, that's who was at the meetings the last two weeks, right, Ms. Boyd? We talked about KZF, KZF was the ones who was at the, um, concert series for the last couple of weeks. And again, that open house is September fourteenth, is that correct?
It is.
Okay, very well, all right. And so they are talking about the, a Southern Gateway border that comes into the village from Wyoming, so that, that, that was their task. So just wanted to make sure that, again, our concert series is scheduled again for Thursday. And Ms. Sherman has passed out the information about the upcoming, just upcoming events down there, the farmer's market is coming, the last flash of the pool party is coming. Again, the next couple of weeks for the concert series, so just some exciting stuff down there, but most importantly, we want everybody to be involved in the ribbon cutting at Harmony Park. Again, that is scheduled for September the eighth at six o'clock. And that is all I have. Vice Mayor, I do need an approval of my Mayor's Court monthly statement, though, tonight.
Absolutely, I'd like to make a motion to approve Mayor's Court monthly statement for the month of August and the, August, yeah, and the amount, July, August?
August.
So it would be the, it would be the July collection.
We were back on.
Thank you, all right, I'm moving ahead of myself, thank you, in the amount of twenty-one thousand six hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
All right, motion has been moved and properly seconded, all eyes? Very well. Legislation, yes, ma'am?
I know what you said as far as Princeton schools is concerned, but what we did mention is that there is a sign down on the corner of Riddle as Springfield Pike that talks about a certain, it would be, you know, that mentions it and tells the residents that we should send it in. So can something be added to that sign that maybe says that you can apply, you can do the, you can do the survey online?
We'll look at that.
I can look into it.
We can look at that.
Sure.
Did we make the motion to approve?
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
We're moving on to legislation.
Legislation?
Yes, Mayor, the first item is Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance establishing and affirming the salaries and compensation of all offices and positions in the village of Woodlawn.
I need a motion for suspensions of the rules of Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three?
I'd like to make a motion.
I just have a general question. Where regards to Section Three, looks like all other departments were identified by position and our names, except Section Three, the Police Department only lists the part-time individuals.
Um, cause all full-time officers are covered under the step ordinance?
Yes, under the step ordinance.
Yes. Just wanted to make sure.
No worries, no worries.
Has it been motion moved?
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the suspension, please?
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third.
Mayor, may I ask one more question?
Yes, you may.
Oh, an additional question. Looks like we're gonna be trying to move forward with a code enforcer, but the amount is indicated, looks rather low for a full-time code enforcer in the future, so I guess that's something we can look at in the future?
Yes.
That was it, thank you.
I need your vote.
Your vote?
Yes.
Very well. I need a motion, I need a motion for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the passage, please?
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third.
Aye.
I do need to, I think we need to add an emergency clause to this, all right? So I need a motion to declare an emergency on Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three?
I'd like to make a motion to, to declare an emergency on Ordinance Number twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the emergency, please?
Okay, Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third.
Very well.
The next item is Ordinance Number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending appropriations for the fiscal year ending December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-three.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance Number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance Number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the suspension, please?
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Very well. I need a motion to declare Ordinance Number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three for passage?
I'd like to make a motion, go ahead, Ms. Brown, go ahead.
I'll make a motion for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moved and properly seconded for passage, roll call, please?
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third?
Aye.
Esther Brown? I mean, Esther Boyd?
Well, all right.
The next item is Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance amending Section five point zero two Vacation Pay and adding Section four point one two Tuition Reimbursement of the Village of Woodlawn Personnel Policies and Procedures Manual and declaring an emergency.
I need a motion to, I need a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules of Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the suspension, please?
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Very well, I need a motion to, for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second the motion.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call, please?
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Very well. It did, I apologize for that. It does have an emergency clause on it, team, I apologize for that. I need a motion declaring an emergency on Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion. For declaring an emergency for Ordinance Number twenty-eight, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the emergency, please?
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Very well.
Next item is Ordinance Number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance approving the sale of certain property in the village of Woodlawn.
I need a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance Twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion to suspend the rules for Ordinance Number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the suspension, please?
I'm sorry, I didn't get the second.
Mr. Lawson?
I got the second now, sorry, Mr. Lawson. Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
You second the motion.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman the third?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
I need a motion for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three?
I'll make a motion for passage of Ordinance Number twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second it.
Roll call on the passage, please? Roll call on the passage, please.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Uh, and the last item is Resolution 29, 2023, a resolution authorizing the interim municipal manager to enter into a joint agreement between the Board of County Commissioners, Hamilton County, Ohio, and the Village of Woodlawn, Ohio, to administer a community revitalization grant awarded for property development along Springfield Pike.
I need a motion for passage of Resolution Number 29, 2023?
I'd like to make a motion for passage for Resolution Number 29, 2023.
Motion been moved and properly seconded, roll call on the passage, please.
Robert Lawson?
Aye.
Aaron Tillman III?
Aye.
Esther Boyd?
Aye.
Rosemary Brown?
Aye.
Cindy Chandler?
Aye.
Emma Fitzgerald?
Aye.
Very well.
That is all we have, Mayor.
All right, all right. Is there any new business that comes before this council?
Yes, Mayor, I do, just a, a quick little update. So, um, I'd like to thank, um, village administration and council in supporting the idea of bringing the Free Little Library to the village of Woodlawn. In the next few weeks, we will have our own, um, free library located near the corner of Woodlawn Boulevard and, uh, Mayview Forest. And it is based on an honor system. Come get a book, um, bring a book back and enjoy reading. Reading is fundamental, as we all know. And this will support not just the, uh, not just the school-aged children in the community, but adults as well. So, uh, we hope that you can come out and enjoy our Free Little Library and we look forward to expanding this in the near future in our community.
Excited, thank you, Ms. Chandler, for taking that lead on that. I'm excited to see that. Is there anything else that comes before this council? Having none, I need a motion for adjournment, please.
I'd like to make a.
Go ahead.
For adjournment?
I'll second.
The motion been moved and properly seconded, all ayes?
Aye.
Very well, thank you so much, enjoy the rest of your evening. Thank you all so much for coming out.